According to.
I don't know, that's a, I don't know why that started popping up. I had to do exactly what Patty was talking about to read the biomass minutes and now it's like attached itself on the zoom.
Oh.
I, I don't know, I noticed that on the very login page on zoom, it has AI on the side of it. And I, I thought it was probably just an upgrade on zoom.
Well, well, I mean, it'll take minutes, but it's just kind of fun.
Still a lot of different stuff, though. Morning. Alright, good morning, everybody. It is eighteenth twenty twenty five. Harney County Court uh is now in session. If everybody please stand and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright, good morning, everybody. Alright, let me see. Agenda approval.
Little two preview agendas presented.
Um, and I'd just like to mention that um symmetry care has requested some flexibility in in that they plan to show up around eleven. Um, second.
A motion's been made and seconded uh to approve the county court regular session agenda for today, June eighteenth. As mentioned, uh we may move things around just a little bit to facilitate people's uh availability. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? And hearing that motion carries. Um. I just realized you have the AFAS stuff and whatnot in between. Agenda minutes like we normally take care of minutes, was there a reason?
That what?
That you have agenda items in between?
Yeah, just because I'm conscious of their time and I didn't want them to have to be here long.
Okay, well, let's let's get rid of the the minutes approval then real quick, like it usually doesn't take that much um um. Motion to approve minutes from June fourth county court regular session.
I move to approve the Harney Ca- County Court meeting minutes from the regular session on June fourth twenty twenty five, so.
A motion's been made to approve the meeting minutes from Harney County Court Regular Session on June fourth twenty twenty five. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? In hearing that motion carries. Alright, um, and then again, then because of um people's agenda or uh work schedules and whatnot, we'll just go ahead and move right into. Uh we have Adam Kemper from AFAS, uh the Predator Control Program uh for an update, program update. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Thanks for having me. Um, a few notes here over the last few months. I don't know if you're aware where we are. Wolf in Riley this spring um did multiple, almost twenty-four hour shifts with uh ODFW and another USDA wolf guy out of camp for um kill multiple calves. Didn't do much about it, it's protected there um. And then during cabin season, a lot of cattle works um. All over the county and from Riley, Burnie, go down cattle valley fields, um which is still an unstoppable job. Uh the Raven Work and Power Company, people calving um. I know a lot of people are aware of it, during cabin season, ravens. I don't know, I'm just correct or you want to go there, but they're pretty rough on calves um.
Yeah, I've heard they can be threat to eyeballs and.
Take the eyeballs out.
Yeah. If they sense any kind of a wound, they're right on top of it.
Yes. Ham injury, chat a bad problem with it this spring, uh got a little early. Um. Memorial week, week before Memorial Weekend, uh Hotchus, Southgarden, he lost at least four calves to a bear. Uh Steve Rickman also lost another one. We uh being ODFW, we investigated it to be a but a bear, ODFW gave me the okay, I took care of the bear, I forgot off the day. Um. Have not since had any bear problems um. Uh. Just recently, there were a lot of skunks. They're having their babies, like gonna move around in their homes. Uh a lot of beaver, I know, down Riverside this morning in daylight, checking the river.
The beavers, are you um addressing the animal itself or just their dams?
Yes, they are, so.
The animal?
I mean, I've done the dams in the past, especially like at my house, the next day they're back, so um. It's not quite time yet, but we'll we'll transition into relocating them. Like last year, the refuge had me relocating beaver from there. So it's trapping in the age springs, moving them to different areas around the county where people want them. But we'd have to do that between July and October. It's too early to relocate babies. After Oct- after October, it's too late to get them established, so. So next month we'll transition into relocating them, I mean. Uh what else? Box cats and box going chickens. That were now lying down at our ranch, not so long ago. Was able to fly, I believe, four times uh when weather was permitting and didn't really get to cabin season with their brain. So. Yeah, I don't know, a lot of the same stuff.
Flying for monitoring or actual control?
Control. Yeah, blue. Well, Riley, this country, uh Roan Springs, Rock Creek. Yeah, it's all over.
Fixed wing?
Yep.
Uh and the bear, where was the bear at?
About five miles north of town, through. Last fall, we actually had one, he had the reservation. It started at my house. Mitch Baker, that I'm getting it, it's just a couple houses away. I mean, we have a lot of bear right now.
Hmm, yeah.
Could be from the fire.
Animals gonna shift around to new habitat?
Well, initially, I know the bear was depreding. And normally those bear spring, elk grabbing their calves and the deer. There are none left, there are none there, so the cattle are there, hey, free of those into that, we just close. Hmm. Yeah, you know, I try to at least once a week uh will patrol, go to the forest room, Eddie Jones sheep. Whoever's got cattle up there, you know, just looking for wolf activity, wolf sign, but is that for the producers, you know, if I see anything that's questionable? We thought we had three wolves two weeks ago up in the morning spring area, turned out it was three huskies um, but.
Feral or?
Probably, um no collars. I didn't physically see them, ODFW did. But uh Tom Eddie Jones uh sheep herders said they were wolves, so started doing perimeter through the day and down the tracks, thought, yeah, it is, but turned out to be were huskies.
Okay.
But we do, we do get um what do you have, W calls me probably once a week, discuss wolves and potential sightings. By the time I go look at it. Um, no.
Um, did, has somebody visually verified the husky, that they're huskies or?
Yeah, so on Facebook, somebody had some pictures of a couple huskies um. Lee Foster actually found one of them deceased. Whether it was shot or not, I don't know, but the original, he seen the two live ones, they're down to dead one. At first, his first thought was wolf, that we got better looks.
Um, I mean, unless person can hundred percent verify whatever, but there's no protection for a feral, feral husky out there.
That is correct.
Yeah.
There's on the wolf, though.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's where a person would have to be real careful making that judgment call and
Yes.
taking matters into their own hands.
That was the one in Riley, physically seen it with a cat in its mouth. Was not afraid.
Yeah.
Thirty yards from the tractor. We did a lot, we did two, at least two solid leaves of non-lethal fox lights, on the horn, two guns. So it paid, it's disappeared.
It finally evacuated the area itself on its own?
I I think what happened, happened, bigger. Probably enough human presence, it just got fed up with it, so.
Is that one collared?
No, we don't have a collared wolf in Harney County.
We don't have one.
There are wolves here, without a doubt it, but. We, hopefully the next phase of the endangered isn't too far out, where at least the producers can protect their livestock. Not front watch, watch your calves get ate up, you can't do anything about it.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, I think that's about, I don't. Bird work at the Leeville too, forgot that one, so.
The eagles, pigeons?
Every kind of bird, even starving sparrows.
That's a good question. Or, or the bears or endangered and the humans that are camping? I mean, is there enough of them and?
Oh, there's plenty, I seen, I saw another one yesterday, actually, um so I've said physically seen five this year.
So camp, people camping should be watching out for them or?
I mean, uh. It's not uncommon for a bear to attack a person, uh especially if their food source was depleted, they're still hungry. Um. But I wouldn't be worried about it personally.
I think the the human interaction concern is while we don't normally in this part of the country really have to worry about when we go camping and about keeping our food and cooking it, you know, your food cooking sources and the the odors that that presents and whatnot that draws them closer to you like it would up north in in Canada and Alaska and whatnot. That people may have to start to take a different mindset on their camps and how they run their camps when they're out camping to prevent from drawing them in and protect themselves that way.
Absolutely. We have, we are, I am starting to see a lot more bears on there. And I've seen five, because which is, and I have no lead, large amount, bear. Certainly have gear.
Young ones or adults?
Adults.
Adults.
Even I have game cameras set up all over for wolves and I have a full camera just to have snow down there in that big, look like a big boar, big male, I think. That one I saw was right up in my range, and it was a day, so. They're, they're on the move this time of year. I would be. The one that was in our yard last fall was just the root up series, and there again, I think it was because of the fire, and it probably got pushed down. Something that can happen.
You mentioned boar, is there any, any activity from wild, wild pigs? In Harney County, east southeastern Oregon?
Not that I'm aware of anymore. The last one I saw was in two thousand and eight. Um. Not too far from now, and I have not seen signs since. Every now and then you hear someone say, and they saw something, but we obviously don't have a huge population of them, because they're a problem.
Yeah. When they get a hold of, when they get a established colony of them or whatever pack or whatever you want to call them, they're.
They're already.
Yeah.
For whatever reason, they didn't take off the wealth here. Vocals, right, that's terrible, yeah, but.
Most of what you reported on is pretty directly tied to agriculture and utilities. And I understand the indirect implications to the economy that affects everyone, but you mentioned skunks. Are there some other examples of things that are more directly tied to people not involved with agriculture or electrical utilities?
Um, yeah, badgers, perhaps people badgers, people do that, they get your yards. Last year I was doing the Crane Cemetery, got invested with some badgers, actually two stoves were falling over. Don Clement said, we can get rid of one of them, digging up his driveway, leaving holes to stay. You guys have all seen a badger hole before, they're not pleasant, um. Said, scum, some badgers, uh. You know, not, not so much indirect from agriculture, no. Most everything's ag-related, minus like the birds from the landfill, that's it, human health and safety. The beavers down other um age springs, that was human health and safety. They're flooding up the culver, flooding back into the undergrounds.
Kind of a nuisance abatement?
Yeah. You know, the the little bobcat I had get, it's killing chickens, it's just a, just regular resident around outskirts of town. But actually got box and a box back there, so both of them were taking care of the chicken, it's just a residential home, not agricultural.
Right now, right now you work through AFAS, right, which is through USDA? Oh, just to be candid. It will be increasingly hard to fund this position, and I understand the importance of this position for the entire county. And so I, I am just curious, if you could I think I understand why it has to be through AFAS, but are there other ways that we could do this to better meet the needs of the community, because it seems like there's an awful lot of administrative overhead going to AFAS, to be frank.
Yeah, uh. I, yeah, I mean, I I guess, I don't know the the details of, you know, how to go about doing that, um. I know AFAS, they kind of have the the DRC, the poison for birds, you know, it's what they roll. But. You're on that. No.
What are types of credentials does a a contractor who is unaffiliated with the Department of Ag uh or um AFAS? What kind of, if you know, what, what kind of requirements does a state or other entities have for someone who does that as an individual contractor?
I think I understand what you're saying, so like, wh- what can I do that like?
You or anyone who who wanted to do work for us?
Um, well, we all get like a permit to take care of a bear problem, um. You know, I I have the ability to use hounds, which were in a lot of hounds in nineteen seventy.
Oh.
Okay, yeah, so I kind of get, that's the best way to take care of certain types of animals, you know, um.
I guess, I mean legally, uh is there certain training license credential that that can make it i- an individual or a s- a small private company um do most of this work, if not the the bird poison stuff, but because they're considered to be competent and licensed to do so or not, and then?
Yeah, well, uh so like a typical civilian.
Yeah, we're better.
With, to to be able to take care of the, to track about the year on privately and then like trap coyotes, um. If those animal was a problem, for the most part, not like a poor bear, box cats, things like that, don't know, um. Probably couldn't work on the refuge. Um. Problem. I mean. Don't know.
Okay, that's fine, I I don't, I don't know.
W.
Oh, I see, okay.
Is possible.
It sounds like there's more than just access to the bird poison that is beneficial to being under the federal umbrella.
Yeah, I mean, probably, you know, this isn't something I've actually put into young, what my job is. But. Yeah, the passion, when I did revenue now, it's just a seasonal to winter for recreation, really, you know. Very easy doing, so create more of a problem for this job, because going out there taking tarries, you know. Coyote fur price, it used to be hundred bucks, hell, they're twelve dollar last year. So it's saying, where's your wild gun to shoot them, so, where the bowlers, well. Now all of a sudden, you got two thousand coyotes that aren't getting taken out of town. Because people aren't wasting their valuable shooting, you know, you're having a branch or a shooter, you have the opportunity, but they can't focus time on it. But that that is a good question, I mean, it's something to look into.
It's good, I mean, we value these services so much and we're just getting priced out because of our own county financial situation.
I, I, yeah.
Just trying to.
So if a private party has an issue, do they call the F and W or do they call you?
Either, it is, they call ODFW, ODFW is gonna send them to me.
So what is your contact information?
Um. I don't know, pardon me, but give you a phone number.
Okay.
Uh five eight nine, five four one, five. Eighteen twenty one.
Wait a minute, five eight nine what?
Eight, uh five four one, five eight nine, eighteen twenty one. It's absolute.
And so naively out of curiosity, if any resident in the county is having a problem like badgers in their driveway or skunks killing their chickens in town and they call you, do they have a financial responsibility or that's just part of the job as you take care of that?
It's just part of the job.
That's quite a service that I think a lot of people don't understand.
A resource to county funds, I guess.
You, you know, we were interested in creating a um a taxing district for predator control. And this was some years back, maybe four years, I don't know, it's a little while back, and the state legislature um took away the ability to do that for some reason.
Hmm.
Does that, I think, I think the community could, there might be a good shout at that getting voted in if with enough education to to the value, uh but well, people in town, there might be, you know, quite a bit of unawareness, or maybe they're they're totally aware that that you're responsive to in-town stuff as well. But um we we do value it very much, and I appreciate you telling us some of the stuff I didn't know about uh different predators you've been dealing with.
Yeah.
Fortunately, I think it will get worse rather than better, so.
Not to get too far in the weeds, but I I have a bunch of information from a few counties, and Clamath County in particular of their resolution and how they did a predator control district. But I held off on reaching out to them because I know I'm gonna see them next week at county college, and I figured we just talked about it.
You know how long ago they did that? Was a while ago?
I could look it up, but I think it was, because I've heard you talk about that legislation, I thought it was after that.
If I'm wrong, I want someone to correct me, but that was my recollection.
I'll find out more about it.
Thank you.
About to me.
We'll, we'll get together and talk about that more as we get going. We've got an agenda today, but I can do a little research.
Hmm.
I I think, I think the big question is, I mean, obviously the poison is is restricted to uh licensing under AFAS, basically. Um, you know, what other elements of the regulatory elements are restricted? Or or the normal public or a or a county employee or whatever are not el- eligible or whatever to do, such as the um uh, you know, using the hounds or whatever, I mean, there's obviously an exception there for your position to be able to use those kind of techniques. Uh so other, other elements like that, that that adds to the critical nature of the position, that that normal public entity or civ- civilian citizen can't do themselves.
I mean, I'm not really positive on like areas I can track, like right now I can go out into the forests, there's BLM year round, um. They practice how their cattle run up through the forests, and they got a problem, I can work there, work around them. I don't know, as a, just a accounting employee, how that would work, any line, I don't know.
Well, that's, I mean, that's just, that's just for, you know, knowledge, comparison and knowledge of what 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 other potential we could do with this program to be able to to still provide the services. But if, if, you know, the the poison element example predominantly is an element that affects the power companies, O-Tech and Harney Electric, is that correct, or do you use it in other?
Definitely the ranchers too.
Right.
I should probably poison more for the ranchers than I do for Harney Electric.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, during that. It's probably sixty forty, forty that I like very. There's only so many power poles in the county that um measure of a little tough, you can get to know a lot of them, they're underwater, up through the flat, but.
Where where does that protection come from? Is it from the uh migratory bird or is it uh um? Ah, darn it, what's the other one, the pre- um? Oh, what's the other one, like hawks and whatnot, um?
It it's a state permit, I believe, but I'm not sure of that, I.
But I mean, the protection of the birds themselves.
Of the ravens?
Yeah.
That that's a statewide permit, so each region is allotted X amount of ravens per year.
But the original protection on them comes from federal acts, doesn't it?
Probably, most birds are.
Yeah.
Federal side.
Um, birds of prey, that's the one I was trying to think of. Um, are protected as are migratory birds, et cetera. Um.
Did this particular poison just affects road ravens, magpie, starlings? Doesn't affect a group of prey, but.
Do you know offhand any examples of the public safety risks that are mitigated by controlling those birds at the landfill?
Beyond being just being a nuisance.
Yeah, there's probably a disease component to that, I would guess.
Starling raiders do spread fair amount of seeds, um, don't know, spread the cattle or other birds, um. You know, like these waterfowl carry that avian flu or whatever it is. Here in about two weeks, both of them are tested by a surveyor. But no, beyond being actually nuisance, I don't know.
I was just curious.
And um financially, the county, um we're using Taylor grazing next year or this year? Just to even pay for it, we didn't used to have to do that, we used to use Taylor grazing for some other things, but this is a priority, I mean.
Complete our entire balance in Taylor grazing this year to be able to, yeah, well, this coming budget, July one.
Yeah, and uh so we're looking for any ideas and and information to help us figure this out.
I think.
They are. But we don't want those for federal money, probably.
Wow.
Or pigs again.
Yeah. In, in previous years, several, two, three years back, whatever, ARPA funds were used to to.
That is correct, that is, I I advocated for that, and we, under the the primary focus of our, our economy um, you know, not only for agriculture, but for the tourism related uh economic benefit that went for the hunters and other folks that came in, and the hunting's just, you know, going down and down and down, it's noticeable.
Part, mostly the predator.
Yeah, thank you.
So, so funding sources, where I was going with that is that that in recent years past, ARPA funds were used to to provide funding for this. In this coming budget, the funds that we're using are uh really again outside funds, they're not general fund dollars. Um Taylor Grazing Act and and some other funds that we've put together to be able to to fund it all this year, um. Actually, there's a little bit of general fund dollars this year, I think it was sixteen thousand dollars or something that had to go towards it. Um, general fund is very limited in revenue sources. And if it comes to the point where we can't get those outside dollars, that's where our conundrum comes from, is that that you know, the the full amount for the program to come out of general fund would would not be probable or possible, but. So unless we can come up with predator controlled district establishment or some other outside uh funding. So unless we can come up with predator controlled district establishment or some other outside uh funding source. That's that's where we're at. That's the conundrum. And it's, you know, hopefully within this next year, we're funded right now for this next coming year from July one to to. June of next year. But during that timeframe, that's where we'll be looking for trying to find those sources.
I want to set this good together and. Figures my business out.
Um I I see a member of the press here. I don't know if if you ever have time to to choose your next topic, but I would think if um some of the information that. Mister Kemper gave us today on some of the stuff he's works on be. I I believe there'd be some people in our community don't know, don't know that. It'd be good information.
Don't understand at this job just to.
And and how much you're doing.
I personally experienced so come to that was like supersized in my garbage can sometime too, so. Yeah, you can run up against things that you're not prepared to deal with.
All right, um, do you have anything else for us?
Uh that's about it for me for now. I definitely must let's get together. Grab your head. So we uh I want to keep this job. I love this job.
Want you to keep doing it.
The more I do it, the more. I've realized how much the county needs it. So. It's been fun helping everybody.
Yeah, I'm I'm impressed by how you've been able to really reach. Across the the whole counties.
I think everybody in the county was calling.
And the partnership with O D F and W, I think is underestimated too. Foster talks about that all the time with the wolves. If we didn't have you doing that, our our Fish and Wildlife Agency couldn't handle it.
I know I I'm on the phone. I was on the phone this morning. Um they wanted me to come and help with. Okay, there. I probably gotta come to this. Yes, I mean, like the. I I do know there is some funding through O D F W for a cause. It's not a lot. It's kind of a certain amount for the whole state. And the guys up north and well, I like Joseph County and stuff, use those those funds. I think I'm allotted like eighty hours a year while I do world war now.
Yeah, for the record, this year, the county's portion of the program is ninety four thousand five hundred dollars. The entire program. Roughly, I don't remember, but like hundred and twenty one thousand, something like that is the total total price for the for the program. So that means that other sources, federal, state, and what other sources are picking up. Thirty thousand ish.
So we're doing.
Twenty eight thousand or something like that.
Three quarters. Yeah, it's on the county and.
Less than half of that.
And we just don't have.
That's what I heard the other day.
And twenty years from now, it won't be much different. You don't do this job for the win. But I totally.
Um I mean, and that is an issue, the the overhead issue portion of the of the program.
Yeah, while we're getting a lot of extra forty five or fifty thousand is access to the poisons.
Oh, another couple thousand here for expenses like ammunition traps like that, but.
I I I mean, I guess again to to cut. To cut that through the fog or whatever, if the ability for the county to hire a county trapper, a county predator control agent. We could obviously do it for less than what we're paying AFIS for. Um it's not, it's not the service that we're providing. That's the question. It's the cost of the program really. And if and if that was to be seventy thousand dollars a year to fund and and provide this program. That's twenty five thousand dollars a year savings that the county sees. Um and that, you know, depending on what salary would be and materials and supplies, what would be needed for the for that position and whatnot. That's that's the question we're basically looking at. And and whether or not and whether or not it could be converted to a county position, but obviously the there's a barrier there with the poison part of it. I mean, I don't know. Uh per se, what the regulation specifically says that only an AFIS certified per person can administer this poison. Or if through appropriate training and certification and and agreements or whatever, could a county agent do that?
I know.
Yeah. I mean, you know, maybe that's maybe that's a direction that we need to look at is is could there be agreements, MOUs or or whatever between. Between the county and the federal agency. That we could do this kind of stuff ourselves. Versus having to rely on through the bureaucracy of the federal government.
Wouldn't you lose the claim then and the the aerial, you know? Things with coyotes and.
Well, we pay ten thousand dollars a year right now, which again, I don't think we'll be able to do next year, but right now in past two years, three years. We've subsidized fuel for a a private contractor to do that, but if we're wrapping it all up into one program, there's money there that we could. You know, that we could put towards our own program.
We've been only part of any of this weather dependent season, but. Last this year we flew four times last year, six or eight. It is very effective. You can do it one day on an airplane, but it takes me a month to.
And a and a rotor wing is even better.
Way better, more expensive.
All right, any other? Any other questions for Mister Kemper?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh and we would love to continue the conversation. We'll be in touch.
I'll get over to you guys here and wait for two or see what I can offer to.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Uh so then moving along next on the agenda is um. Uh Mister Yunker is the vice chair of the Long Term Recovery Group that was formed uh post flooding incident uh to seek out. Uh funding opportunities, grant, excuse me, grant opportunities and whatnot to assist. And aid uh residents here in in the Burns, Harney County area. Um thank you, Mister Yunker, for being available for us today. If you could kind of give us an update on the Long Term Recovery Group and where your guys are at, we would appreciate it.
I'd love to. Uh we have, as just stated, yes, we have started and. And incorporated a Har- Harney County Long Term Recovery Group. We're meeting on a weekly basis at this point and uh the meetings. Consists of uh several community members of. The that make up the Harney County Long Term Recovery Group. Some of them are from. Communities, some of them are business owners and uh faith based uh variety agencies and uh. Currently, our 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 biggest, our biggest project that we're working on right now, if we want to call it project, is that we have. A hundred thousand dollar grant that's available. Uh that we need to, we need to spend a hundred thousand dollars. Uh in our community that have been infected by the floods uh disaster uh by the end of June. And right now, uh as I am the vice chair, I'm working with Christie Mace, who is our lone case manager. Uh dealing with. Uh the impact of the floods. Think she said this morning up to about half of that has been spent with about forty. Families or forty situations, about forty families, forty uh. I yeah, about forty families, situations dealing with the homes or uh or. Residents that have impacted and so we're running out of time. We have until the end of the month to spend that a hundred thousand. And uh Christie, her workload is so, so. Uh heavy right now that it'll be, it'll be amazing if we can get that spent. By uh the end of the month.
What are the parameters for that grant? What can it be used for?
Um great question. Well. We have a preliminary assessment at this point that has been sent out to the community and that assessment uh. Uh individuals who respond will deal with uh anything that has been, I shouldn't say anything, but. Uh if a resident, a a structure that has been impacted by floodwaters. Uh possessions, uh there's a long list. I can't, I I don't know every de- detail. But anything that has been impacted at a residence that that had been uh by floodwaters. Would be potentially qualified. There's tiers that are assessed. Uh and that's more Christie Mace uh expertise, but. There is uh pretty much a wide variety of of. Available, not available, a wide variety of of. Issues that could that that could be taken care of dealing with floodwaters. It could be. Uh the construction side, electrical side, plumbing side, uh drywall to. Uh flooring to insulation to appliances. There's a a wide gam- gamut of. What that can cover.
Has your outreach to affected uh residences been okay? Um are you still having uh problems with uh getting the word out for people to come apply?
No, actually, um it's going as I believe successfully well, getting the word out. Uh there's always gonna be that uh I didn't hear, I didn't know, but I we've got letters sent out. We've got uh we've got. Uh word of mouth, we've got a what was it Judy from. The Burns City Hall. She was on the radio a couple of weeks ago, mentioned about the preliminary assessments and that having funds available. To uh. Some social media stuff, so uh I think we're. I think we can do better, but considering the timeframe that we're working with, I think we're doing a pretty good job getting the word out.
Bob, I have a question. Do you know? If those funds, whatever you aren't able to expend as the month, as the days go by here. Can they be? Can they go to the county building department and be fenced as a fund to draw down on permit and inspection fees? Uh that will need to be done as people continue to work on their their homes, et cetera. I I mean, I'm just. I'm just saying, can can that be, can it be appropriated for that specifically for that? And expended, i.e. by transferring it to the county building department for just that purpose and only that purpose?
I don't believe so. That's a that's a great question, but I believe it's going to be uh per case. Uh that hundred thousand dollars is is set aside for per case, per situation, per family. Uh not to deviate that to a different agency to hold that. Uh but I I I. Uh Louis from O D H S, I believe, and Christie and Sue Weathers would be a better one to answer that question, but I. I don't believe so. I we just got to spend it based upon the needs of our community by per case.
Did businesses fall under the purview of that grant or is it just private residences?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do businesses fall under that grant or just private residences?
I believe it's private residents. We did have a uh a conversation regarding some potential landowner, uh some uh. Landlords who use their uh bill their a a uh a structure for rent. And so that was a a a topic and I don't, I don't believe so.
Yeah, because I think it turned once it's it's a rental property, it becomes a commercial type of an event venture. So the funds are solely for those. The way I understood it anyway was solely for those individuals that were in a private capacity. And the private individual that's renting a home. Request funds for that property because it's not their property.
But there uh you know, some possessions that they may have had that they own or on that problem, you know, that's a a different, a different scenario. That uh they can apply if there are some personal belongings or personal uh other other private stuff that they own. They can apply.
Is there a? An informational link? That the county could share or has the county already shared that in the municipalities as well?
Yeah, I the last meeting that we had, we discussed that the Harney, the Harney Hubs, our partner, we're falling under them. So so. Christie Mace is our case manager who's working, who obviously is staffed at Harney Hub. I believe the last conversation we had, we're, we were gonna. Uh get information posted on the the Harney County Senior Center, uh the hubs, uh websites. And so on to direct them to filling out this this assessment. Yeah, and we we're in this 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 transition, I shouldn't say transition, but this place of how. How to get, do we develop a webpage? Do we uh start our own? Uh what Facebook page and so on. So there are some good discussions and how we can utilize those tools. Lottie Presley is working with us as far as far as getting P R stuff out. So uh we're we're about a month, a little over a month old, so we have. Uh we have quite a bit of projects to get us to a online presence.
We have a a member of the press here that.
Yeah, I'd just like to ask um. How this impacts the tribe? Is the is the tribal housing eliminated too? And what do you see as your total number of? Residences that qualify?
Great question. So. Um our Harney County Long Term Recovery Group is uh is a. Is, how do I say? Open for all. We want to reach every single person in the community uh with any disaster that has come up. So. Tribe is included in that. We do not, uh we're not based upon race, color, uh religion, uh faith or whatever the case is. So. Yes, the tribe is is definitely uh in uh. Is has that opportunity, whatever resource that we can provide. So.
So in this, in that instance, with the tribe, it wouldn't necessarily be any of those ethnicity or other uh. Categories that you mentioned, but it's strictly um uh governmental boundaries. Um are those funds eligible for use on tribal lands, tribal properties?
I don't know the the, I don't know the details of that. It's way beyond my my expertise, but I I just fall back to whoever's had a disaster. And needs resources, we ask them to to please fill out an assessment and we put the the wheels in motion to begin. Uh seeing wh- what we can do to help. So I. There's one component that it doesn't matter. We won't even see the name necessarily, uh whatever. We just want to get the the funds out to those. So I. I don't know the the. The ins and outs of tribal land stuff. That's, I have to defer that to either the county courts or. Someone else was in our our. Our group.
Okay, just as a point of clarification, some of the houses are owned by the tribe, so I didn't know if you would consider those like rental housing. Because they wouldn't be owned by the individuals, they'd be. Be tried way on.
Gotcha. And I I don't know, all all I know it on some grants and so on, that would probably come through. There are some stipulations like what we're dealing with if it's a. Uh a commercial versus private. I don't believe what you just described is fits in that category. Uh so uh we just. We would, I I would had to defer that the definitive answer to Christie Mace, who is our, who is our lone case manager. Uh you asked another question, I think previously about how many? How many have been affected? Is that correct? I I don't want to.
How many would be? Have you got an overall count of how many houses out there were really affected by the flood?
Well, so there are numbers thrown out in the very beginning, eighty, hundred and something. So. My goal is by the end of June to have a a lid, a a working database. Right now, we have about four databases. That have been submitted to me, American Red Cross, to Rubicon, to O D H S and through uh what. We have compiled there as a work part. So literally have all these databases of addresses and phone numbers that had either some damage or some work done. I have consolidated them. And by the end of June, with all the letters that we've been sent out and the assessments that we're receiving. I will have a a. A hard number by the end of June and if forty, if Christie has worked with over forty, that gives us the minimum. I assume and on my database I'm working with that was, uh I think eighty. I used a database of eighty individuals to get letters sent out and phone calls made. That's what I'm working with right now. Some of the. Some of the homes that have been impacted are properties. They have. Some of the homeowners have done work. They're completed. They're already moved in and they are already, they're well. Beyond the disaster. So some some. So some some are have recovered while others have not. So by June, I'll have a a complete, I believe, a very solid list Of what we're dealing with and how we can get our Harney County residents recovered and getting into their homes.
It it sounds like anyone that was affected should fill out an assessment To see if you guys can offer assistance currently or in the future. And if someone were going to come in and fill out an assessment, did they just go down to the hub? Is that where they can receive help?
Oh yeah, so well, the right now we have a a uh a Google Forms pre-assessment that's been shared. Yes, Burn City Hall and as well as the Harney County Hub have the hard copies. And so we have opened up to, hey, Even if you think uh you don't have much damage, please fill out the assessment or You uh you're not sure if you've been impacted, we just simply say, yeah, please fill out the assessment form. Uh because then we collect that and uh sometime either later Or sometime in this process, we have something documented for them. So that we can begin working with them and uh and maybe maybe something comes up later That there was some damage, they said, hey, you know what, I I need I need to be reevaluated. So anybody can fill it out that that believe that they may have been impacted by the floods. And what and again, this is not just, we're dealing with the spring floods. But we put this play this uh this group in place for disasters, not just A past event. That's something I think that's being uh that needs to be really emphasized is this is a long term Recovery group, not only for this disaster, but now we put something in motion for future disasters. Hate to say that, but that's the reality is that we're gonna have disasters down the road.
Yeah, thanks for uh thanks for mentioning that. I was gonna historically, I wanted to give a little bit of background. Um after the floods, the the there were meetings held for community response to help identify and and address Needs of individuals that um you know, on the big scale of response to the flooding And mitigating the flooding on a on a bigger scale, we're probably not getting addressed. So the community, really, it was a grassroots um uh uh effort That brought the different entities together for the community response portion of it. And in that in that uh those meetings, a couple of different uh organizations from other areas that just That experienced fires or other disasters came and spoke to the group. Uh one of them being the um the uh Blue River McKenzie McKenzie River, whatever they call them, so long-term recovery group. And they recommended in in their situation, they went to forming their own entity, nonprofit entity. And it took them a little while longer to get stood up because of that. And they recommended and suggested that the that the Harney County Long Term Recovery Group fold in underneath an existing nonprofit To help to help speed that up, and that's what happened is that the the Harney County Long Term Recovery Group folded in underneath the um Uh the hub, the the Harney County Senior Center, under their nonprofit status for financial uh Monitoring and and coordination and whatnot. Um and in and in that, um the board, a board was created, um and Mr. Yunker is the You're the vice chair. And all those members on that board are volunteers, like most of all of our other boards are. Um but it's it's community coming together to for neighbor to helping neighbor uh type of a thing, in a grassroots type of a Approach, I think, really is the way I would myself.
And I think that that's also uh well, a question that was posed, and I appreciated the question in in a a group session we had last week is Are we uh are we just about dispersing funds and I and Uh no, that's a that is a measured dynamic of our group, but we wanna we wanna assist Our county in a variety ways, both physical, monetarily, uh spiritual, whatever a need of our community is This does that this long-term recovery group, because recovery uh is multifaceted. So we wanna, when we do the assessments, in fact, we'll probably have a find a finer Where I know we have a fine-tuned uh uh assessment form, but what we'll probably see is Places in that where someone uh may need a some counseling or some type of trauma or some type of need That's just not based not based monetarily, so that's We wanna see the whole person recover, not just their structure or their possessions being recovered, so Uh that's that's something also just to emphasize as well.
Any questions? Commissioners, comments?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time. Thank you for the update. If if as you evolve, um if Harney County can help get the word out, please uh remind them to reach out to us To add to our social media and our webpages as well.
Yes, absolutely. Kelly Singhhouse, she's been great getting the letter sent out, so I as I'm just vice, we have a great crew Uh working uh uh behind the scenes, and so absolutely, thank you guys for For uh inviting me to this, and so whatever questions, I know Sue from Uh Harney Hub and Liz Appleman, who is working with the the financial side of things, they can answer a little bit more detail. Uh Stacy Davis is the chair, he's the one that is overseeing it. Uh and I'm, we just have a great crew of individuals. Um so yeah, thank you guys. Yeah, I'm in Las Vegas in a pool tournament, so actually I do gotta go, the president of of the Of the 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 pool that I'm working with, they he popped in, so I I need to head out. Thank you, guys. Thanks for the invite.
All right, thanks, sir. Have a good day. Um I will mention for the record that um we do have representation on that board. Um our emergency manager is on that board and and Kelly Singhhouse is on that board for public health. So we do have representation on that board of the from the county. Uh when it's initial forming, they asked me if I wanted to be on it with those other individuals there, I said, well, I'd rather step back and be more of a supporting role from the county court Than um a board member, so we do have representation on that board.
Well, I hope they'll be able to use those funds in time, yeah.
One other thing I'd throw out there is It's been brought to my attention that there they have had some discussions, maybe formally or informally regarding homelessness, when they talk about disasters. And I just wanted to throw that out for consideration that as we move forward, as the state puts more of an emphasis on how we address that, and we've had this stuff with that Malheur. What's the name of that group that always has?
Community Partner Group.
Yeah, Community Partner Group, we're not getting much out of it, and maybe in the future, once this disaster is kinda winding down, maybe that's the group that can spearhead How we address that.
So I went over to uh Blue River, the community of Blue River, and every year They they experienced um major effects of the holiday fires in two thousand Twenty, I think it was. Um and they formed their Long Term Recovery Group out of that. Um they've kind of had a couple of offshoots, or at least one offshoot anyway for to address housing. They they've only replaced or or addressed about thirty-nine percent of the structures that were lost during that fire. So they've still got quite a bit of housing and issues and whatnot to deal with as a result of that. But one of their offshoots that they that they create or was created out of that Long Term Recovery Group effort was a I don't wanna call it a housing authority, but it was a, and I don't remember what they what the title of it is, but basically, it's a it's a it's a nonprofit That is uh addressing housing in and of itself. And one of the approaches that they've taken is forming land trusts, where they have either purchased or land's been donated. And then and then they're, you know, through funding sources through the state or wherever they found their funding sources, are building houses, like they took us to one site That has uh six uh single-family homes being built on it, and the houses will be sold At a at a reduced market rate, I mean, it's basically covering what their investment is, but not really the The inflationary rate that comes with, because they're a community that's right on a river and property values can be extremely high And cause uh the the resident who's been displaced from their housing of being able to get back into a home. Um so so they're building these six houses, they'll sell them. Uh people will have to finance and buy them just like normal, they'll be their homes, but they won't own the property that's underneath them. The ground that's underneath them maintains the uh will be maintained by the trust itself. Residents will have to pay kinda like an HOA fee for for water and sewer. Uh maybe street uh maintenance, whatever, but but again, they'll own the home. They have ownership in the home, but the property and the infrastructure is owned by the trust, by the land trust.
I remember uh when we used to have CRT meetings and we had a housing subcommittee and a lot of work at that time was Trying to go toward that, that the land trust um concept was um briefed or provided by GEODC to the group. Uh I mean, we became aware of it, but uh nothing was done to do that in our community.
I think it's a very, it it is a very, very interesting approach to dealing with affordable housing. Not subsidized, not low income, but affordable housing. Uh elements in this program are that somebody can't come in and buy one of these homes and turn it into a VRBO. Um it's gotta be residents, gotta be occupied.
It's a VRBO.
Verbos, vacation rentals. Um i- it's gotta be occupied by the resident. Um and in five years' time, say, the individual wants to sell, they can only sell at a at a A nominal increase or whatever the 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 cost of living increase is, so like maybe say three percent a year or something. Um so they can't sell off to, you know, property values go through the roof and it's and the real increase is maybe ten or fifteen percent, just say. They can't sell at that rate, they can only sell at at this pre-agreed-upon rate. So it keeps those houses in an affordable market for people that that otherwise, living on a river community, those properties could could double in value. So so they've put a lot of a lot of uh protective measures in place to make sure that those homes stay Uh affordable for affordable housing. I I think it's a really, really interesting approach. There's another entity just down the road from Blue River That went in and put in some single-family small, they're probably Seven, eight hundred square foot homes. Um they they're linear in shape, they look kinda like, I mean, you know, linear, like a manufactured home. But they're modular, they were modular, built on site, uh foundations, everything. Um a very, very compact community, but there it it really looks nice. And and again, there I believe there's a trust in that one as well that owns the land underneath it and the homes are uh eligible for purchase. Um but some very innovative approaches, I think, to solving home housing issues. So that's just some offshoots from the the Long Term Recovery Group that potentially our group could end up You know, having some splinter groups come off of it or or they themselves, if they wanted to take those approaches, I think it's I i- if you're gonna do a land trust types of situations, it needs to be held under a nonprofit organization. They're the ones, so it's not something while the county could, the county could uh try to express or get interest And get people who are interested in forming a nonprofit to do that, and we could, you know, help along those lines. But it's not something I see the county itself is taking on, right, that role, I agree. All right, uh moving along then, um being right at about eleven o'clock, Cemetery Care is here. And we needed to talk about this the CFAA contract with the state and the county's contract with Cemetery Care.
Yeah, and we want to just make sure we are here to answer any questions, provide some clarity if there's some any confusion about Where this is at. I think there's a couple of key points and and Emily's got a presentation, if you guys would like, we could kinda go through some of that, but You guys belong to the Association of Oregon Counties, and I know you guys participate in that, and we belong to the Association of Oregon Community Mental Health Programs. And they're really in alignment on this uh issue with the CFAA and the state and all the changes that have happened, and you know, there's a Uh not signing it versus signing it, and there's a lot of counties that are not going to sign it or or Representatives from the CMHP is not gonna sign that. We're in that camp as well, we're in alignment with that, so I think that's the first point we wanna make, is we're not Feeling any differently about it than the county court would about the CFAA, um because it's this the subject for availability of funds isn't concerned for us too. Um so that's the first point, and then We wouldn't, the problem, why we're here and and wanting to get this done is because When it comes July one, we won't have a community mental health program if we don't have a contract. And so we've gotta get something done, um if it's Even an extension or a one-year or something like that, we've gotta get something Right, or it jeopardizes our licensure to continue operations as a CMHP.
And it jeopardizes the county's responsibility.
And county then, it goes it goes back to the county then to operate the CMHP or to You know, to put together a CMHP. There's just no time to do that, we're just we're just right at the end here. Uh so I really wanna emphasize that we we gotta get something done so that we can continue to operate. Um and in the contract that we have with the county, there's termination clauses in there That's I think definitely need to be referred to. Uh and it also talks about subject to the availability of fund multiple places in the contract Between the county and Cemetery Care, which protects the county, the county from, you know, if the CFA stop funding it, what will happen? But if you looked at the termination under four point two, the very first one is a funding to the county From the division is not obtained and continued at a level sufficient to allow for purchase of of services under the contract. That's a reason that the contract can be terminated. So there's safeguards already built into this contract to address these Um concerns about what if there the funding was a stop or, you know, those types of things. So I think that was that's a like a key point, and then there's references in here in several other places, right at the beginning Under the the first word as, and this is subject to the availability of funds. It really is, you know, it but the liability for the county, and this is what I really wanna emphasize. When you guys sign a contract with us and we're administering the CFA, that liability becomes ours, and that's what it says in there. It's not the county's uh at that point. Now, the county can terminate the contract, the liability would go back to the county. Um but I would not suggest you guys do that, but because you don't want the liability, this is the protection for the county Not to be on the hook for the funding if it was to fall short or get back or that type of thing. So that's referenced in there in several different places, I really wanna emphasize that. And I wanna address any other concerns that you guys may have about the county's liability or Operation or anything that you might um be concerned about.
Chris, so um when we last looked at it with you guys in the downstairs conference room, et cetera. You you guys may have been aware about what was starting to go on with the CFA, but we were not at that time.
I don't think we were.
And so so it was after that, sometime after that, when now our Awareness and a little bit of knowledge, which can be dangerous, you know, now we have that, and now it looks different. You know, uh um And so the issues with the CFAA and the state and the OJD and all that, that's You know, we don't like what they're doing. We do wanna contract with you, however. Now that I'm more aware, as I'm looking, just even the first couple paragraphs of of this doesn't sound right anymore. Which entity, county or or Cemetery Care, sign the CFAA?
We do.
Okay, so right from the start, this doesn't read right, so I'm just saying, we need still to tweak this and have our county council Advise us that he also agrees, this is totally protects us in every way before. Um so if we just start here, this contract is made and entered into between Harney County Through its, you know, as a county and Cemetery Care, the contractor. Whereas the county, in conformity with ORS, enters into financial Assistant Grant Agreements Division Agreement with Oregon Health Authority to establish a program For, okay, for Harney County. Subject to the availability of Availability of funds, county and the division enter in such agreements each bi- biennium. Each time Harney County, in consultation with contractor and the division, agree This personal service contract, unless earlier terminated, may be amended in writing to reflect the changes, so We're signing it, we have to sign it, the CFAA, the CFAA.
Well, let me talk about that, so you know, so I think the county council has done in the past, and I don't know this cuz I'm not county council. But the way the way I interpret that is the county, through Cemetery Care, enters into that agreement.
I would much, I was gonna say, I was just writing down.
They can clean that up.
This current contract doesn't, we don't delegate in this contract. We don't delegate in this contract for Cemetery Care to enter into an agreement with the state.
I was just scribbling though.
That's under two point one, so it says the county assigns the contractor the authority, the responsibility. That's under two point one. So it says the county assigns the contractor the authority, the responsibility and the responsibility to operate community mental health program.
As if it were the county.
As if it were the county, that's.
I would just like right up the beginning where we say through, you know what I mean? I, when I read that since we spoke yesterday, I went, okay, this is not ready for prime time at the moment. There's even if it sounds minor to you, it sets the whole it clarifies right from.
Yeah, so the assignment is to us, and that's what it's been, and that's why we've signed a contract all these years. Um but that first sentence or the first paragraph, I think it's fine. If you guys wanna clean that up and just say that however you wanna say it, that you know, the contractor will be um assigned to be.
We all prioritize the contractor to be this, you know, I mean, anything specific, I want some.
That's how we, and that's, you know, and it says that throughout here. The first section is reads a little weird. I'm like, well, I think they're doing that through Cemetery Care in this case, and and it explains it later on in here, but that is really why we do sign it. Um the money comes to us, and we sign the contract, it it's done that way. The county retains the mental health authority. And that's how you guys, you can terminate the contract, you can, you know, that you have all that responsibility to do that. But by assigning it to Cemetery Care, you're sort of basically putting some protections in place that it's assigned to Cemetery Care. Cemetery Care deals with the CFA. All the amendments, all of the reporting, all of the other, you know, the stuff, the the licensure stuff that goes with that is all assigned to us and we're responsible for it, and we have to do that. Uh we have been doing, and that's that's our understanding of it, and that was the, that has been the county's understanding of that too, and so I think, you know, you guys are coming into this, and I think this is the second time to go around, and it's good to get clarity on all that, and I'm fine with that, and and we need to tweak the language, but at the end of the day, I just don't want this hanging come July one.
I'm not an expert in this field, but it seems to me like this contract is totally separate from the CFAA. This is between us. The CFAA is between the mental health authority or contracted entity and the state. And so I am, I am fine with this contract, especially if we make some revisions that my colleagues feel are necessary.
Just the through and stuff like that, then.
Just the one.
Through, that word through. I mean, I, when I read it fresh now, because of all this awareness of how it is.
But how can we, how can we assure that we maintain solidarity in our stance on the state's take on the CFAs?
So those two, those two groups that I talked about are closely aligned, and I know that uh Bill has talked with Cheryl Ramirez, he's the art director of AOC MHP. On the other side, upon the ARC side is John Schaefer, who's on GOBE, our we're part of Greater Oregon Bureau of Health. He is a huge proponent of mental health. He's very much involved in the community mental health program. So you've got somebody on your side that works very well with Cheryl, and we um as an assoc- our association, the community mental health programs, wanna be very unified in what we're doing, just as much as you on your guys' side of that as well. And those two groups have been together on this, so on the CFAs discussion. So that's number one about how you to do it. Our interests are no different than your interest. If the, if the, if we sign the CFAA, I see it as our responsibility, right? If they say, well, there's no more funding for that, we're gonna be we're, yeah, that directly impacts us, and we're gonna be advocating on our behalf, like, no, 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 that isn't right. Um and so we, we have the same interest. I gotta be honest with you, this is not a great contract. It's just not the, the CFAA is not a great contract for us.
If, yeah.
In our line of business, it's a, it's a terrible one, but it it's the community mental health program, and we've we have always, uh in some counties don't see it the same way. Some counties have given have felt like they can give their local mental health authority back. I don't think that's ever been tested legally, and I don't think it's a great idea, because I think that creates a disconnect at a community level uh with your mental health and your behavioral health system, right? So I think they can return that to the state uh and be out of the responsibility for them. And you know why they want out of the responsibility? They don't want the CFAA issue.
Exactly.
That, that's why they wanna, that's why. I'm not trying to take you guys, because I think it's a bad idea. I don't think it's a good idea for the county to give up its, its local mental health authority in that way.
What, what, what would be the detriment if we did?
I think you lose.
What could they do to us?
Community level.
They do that.
Yeah, it would be bad for the.
Well, they haven't done anything, so so, okay, so the risks, and again, you're asking somebody to I'll give you an opinion, but I'm not gonna give you, like, I can tell you this. I think somebody could push that issue legally and say, no, statutorily, counties can't give it back. Right? So I think the risk is they could say, no, we're gonna challenge that and and, you know, we're gonna, they could potentially overturn that decision if you decided to give it back. They could. They haven't done it. I think Lawa, Clamath. I think there's a couple others that are out there as well, have have done. The bigger, I think it's more about just the um staying plugged into your community, because if you didn't have the local mental health authority and the state did that, then how does the state operate a program in Harney County that's meeting the needs of people in Harney County, right? Um that's, that's what I would worry about. So I don't think it's a fun thing for you guys to have. I mean, I I get that, it's a pain. Um I don't know what public health looks like. I assume it's a similar, I think there's a public health authority as well. Um and so, you know, you're picking and choosing, you know, like, why would we give this one back and not that one? Um so I, I, I think, okay.
I'm just gonna say that to just piggyback on what Chris said about staying plugged into your community. I think when you hold the local mental health authority, you have the privilege of having a CMHP that does know the community, right? If you, if it gets given back to the state, the state could come in and say, nope, these are the providers we're going to all telehealth and too bad, so sad is what you get. Um and I think it would just, I think it'd be a disservice to the community, and there would be no um rapport um for people's mental health, and I think he would see a deterioration of our of our people who do suffer from mental health issues.
Yeah, you're tied to us in the way that your local mental health authority through your con- contract with us. And so you have to hold us accountable. I think we're responsive to the, to the county needs, uh and that's, that's, we see that as our job. Uh so I think it's more of a partnership. I think if you give that back, I don't think you lose that partnership. Or you have the potential, I don't know. Maybe the state would call us to say we're gonna contract with Cemetery Care.
You know, I and that relationship and everything you just described there is great if we have the money to fund it ourselves, but we don't, and we rely on the state for those funds for this program. Um I mean, we're already reliant on them, and and quite frankly, the CFAA that they're proposing right now is as if they were controlling it themselves anyway by the language that they've taken out of it and inserted to, which financially in the agreement that they're, or the CFAA, they're putting the financial responsibility back on the county if they decide not to fund it.
So but then you transfer that responsibility to us with this contract. So that becomes our responsibility through that contract. So I will tell you right now, I was just looking at this morning with Kiko, the money we get for aid and assist.
I know it's not enough, it's been.
It's two thousand five hundred dollars a year. That doesn't even pay somebody's benefits for an entire month, right? So um so that's all the money we get. So we're already supporting the CFAA um requirements on our own funds. So that's why I don't think you guys need to worry about that, and that's why the contract is so protective for you. Um and it says in the contract too, the um like if there's like, we are responsible for the duties as if it were the county. So even if the funding isn't there, we still do it.
Well, I, I'd be honest with you, I didn't pick that out, but that gives me some concern in and of itself, because that almost makes you guys an agent of the county. And and therefore then makes you, makes you uh accountable to um ethics laws and everything else that the county's subject to.
So but when we sign, you delegate the contract to us, the CFAA, then we, we carry out the CFAA as it's, as if it's ours.
Yeah, we're a contractor. I don't know what a, I don't know what a contractor versus an agent is in county's definition, but we're a contractor and what we're subject to is all the statutory and and the laws and stuff that govern the community mental health program and.
And we have a certificate on our wall that we get
Right.
Signed off for every.
Yes, so then we're reviewed and audited on that, so kind of one of those standards um all the time. So, um we have to meet those sets. Now, the county, if we, if you didn't have Cemetery Care, you would have to do that. You would be operating CMHP. Or I guess if you're thinking about giving it back to the state, then the state would have to operate CMHP, but I hope you're not really thinking that, but.
I'm not. I, I'll just speak for myself. I'm not thinking about that. I just want clarity in below contract. We have the ability to design and write and make, to me, the di- there's just, there was a disconnect. Okay. You guys sign that.
Yes.
Let's make sure that that's understood, that we've deli- agree to or are fine with it or delegated or however you wanna do it. Let's have at least one of them sent it's in here that says that for our own clarification.
I, I agree. I think you should put it in the front, so there's no, you don't have to interpret. I think it just said that the county is through this contract delegates the authority and uh the legal whatever signature, assign the CFA to the contract, something as simple as that.
Well, I could say something like, sign it in, in uh with the partnership of the county board or something.
So, so termination in general, just for any contract that the county does. Most of the time, they're not such a service as you guys provide, which is very complex and very, you know, long, long term. However, most of the time, they say something like all or part of this contract may be terminated by either party with sixty days' notice and written whatever, but this type of contract, this one says mutual consent.
Sixty days.
What, which paragraph are you looking at?
Mutual consent, all or part of the contract doing the term.
Yeah, no, it's the part here that it said may be terminated by mutual consent of both parties. So it's not that either party could back out.
Yeah, and then the next line down there
Oh.
is termination by the county.
Okay, just thank you.
Which, which section were you looking at?
That is uh four point one and four point two.
In addition, okay, that's fine. And we're not looking to do that. I'm just, uh I.
Yeah, but again, that's, I mean, that's where you guys have and how, you know, if you're concerned about.
So, so four point two is under cause. Uh four point one is just no cause. You don't have to have cause. You're just mutually saying we're gonna dissolve this contract. Four point two gives, gives reasons for cause.
Yeah, okay, that's.
Which would be not fulfilling the contract, not fulfilling the CFAA, wh- whatever that might be, tho- that that's cause.
Well, then, you know, if you see the very first one, the funding to the county from the division is not obtained and continued at a level sufficient to allow for the purchase of services under this contract.
But that's a cause, Ellen.
Yeah, I mean, it's, but again, I go back to it's protective about the availability of funds.
Let, let me ask you something. Since we were, this is referred to, the CFA is referred to in this contract as financial assistance grant agreements, division agreement. Is referring it to that way just fine and it means the CFA, or could there be someone who wants to be a jerk, you know, uh say that's the same thing? I don't know. I don't trust hardly anybody anymore, but yeah.
We talked about that the last minute. If you wanna just label this a CFA to be consistent, but.
I don't, no, maybe an asterisk or some, I, maybe not. I mean, did, has it been called the CFA for many years? Was it ever called the division agreement? I mean, I I didn't know if this was like an old term, it's changed over the years and we had updated. Is, is there anything that is not the CFA that is also called a division agreement? You know, I mean, as they're one and the same, it's just a, well, we may wanna change the language on that just for our little contract with you guys. If if that's not something that's changing every, that they don't change it a lot, and it's been CFA for a while now.
Yeah.
Because this is probably based on many years of we've been, okay. County financial assistance. Sorry to be picky, but.
Any other questions about that? Do you guys feel like you can work Smith or get your county council and work Smith something in there about a sign of the CFAA that you guys would be comfortable with? Um or is there any other parts of it that you're, you know, country concerned or anything else?
I would like to volunteer to take any of your comments from uh Judge Hart, uh Commissioner Frank to me, to pen change, get changed, and have our county council look at in fairly rapid succession. And that if we deem that we are ready and want to sign this revised contract with Cemetery Care, that we call a special county court meeting for the purpose of, and so sign it. And it has to be signed prior to June thirtieth. Um and I know they're very concerned.
And I, I will, excuse me, and I'm, and I'm fine with that, but but again, uh language in the CFAA that our, our county council, and I was trying to find it while we were doing this and finally did. So um section it works quite the same as when it's on your desktop. So it's page six and page seven of the CFAA.
Oh, I didn't bring that up.
Yeah, um.
Well, and again, this is still being negotiated, correct?
Correct. As far as I know, it's not.
Provider contract uh means the agreement by and between the county and a provider, under which county subcontracts for the provision of certain services, the term and conditions of which must be consistent with the agreement with regard to any duties or obligations of the subcontracted. Continuing, and this is the part that it's not cooperating and giving me the full screen. Right there. Top of this page, and I can't get it to.
Try zooming now down at the bottom line, or yeah, bottom line.
Now, the scroll, because it's a PDF document, it doesn't wanna let me scroll in between. So there's page six, page seven. It's right up at the top of that. You can see where it's blinking on. You know what? I'm just gonna print this real quick, like. Anyway, specifically says that the county still maintains uh res- um responsibility for financial.
So but I think with our contract, you're delegating that responsibility to us.
No, as long as there's a contract in place now. So say Cemetery Care was to terminate the contract.
Then it goes back to you.
You're right. The county would then have liability in that situation. Now, right? I mean, you would, because we'd say, all right, we're out, we don't wanna do it. Um and then the county's gotta find somebody to do it or do it themselves as an options at that point.
I just need the first seven pages, Holly.
So I don't, I think I know what that's referring to, and I don't disagree. But what we're, what we're trying to say is when you, when you, we're under contract and operating that way, county has some level of protection. Um more so than they would if you were just had a county department that was your mental health department, you're absolutely right, you'd be on the front, a hundred percent.
Okay, so um there's the first part as I read about the uh provider contract. And then that, and that's uh section or par- definition thirty-one, provider contract, page six, bottom of page six, continuing on page seven. Uh OHA consistent to any provider or provider contract does not relieve county of any of its duties or obligations under this agreement. And county remains responsible for such duties or obligations regardless of any provider contract. The provider contract must be in writing, I identify for sub recipients. Uh, the amount of federal funds included in the provider contract and provide the C F D A number.
Yeah, I can see where that does it sound right from our perspective of this. Being meaningful, you know?
Yeah, right, well, it's, it's semi true and it's, I mean, I guess it's, if you, I'd go back to. That's correct. As long as you guys are the local mental health authority. Either you're gonna delegate that to us and we're gonna accept responsibility. Um, but if either party does terminate, the county is responsible to provide that. I think that's, that's very true. You know, our contract in our mind offers you guys some protection, because we're assuming the responsibility for doing. And we've never come back to the county and said, well, we're out and we're gonna do that, because the funding went, we've never done. Um, and so that's, that's the reality.
Never doesn't mean, never doesn't mean could though.
No, it doesn't mean it couldn't, you know, right, there's termination clause and there were sixty days notice, uh, by mutual consent, right? Um, so that.
What's the termination clause with the C F A A? Is, is there one? I mean, cuz that frankly, uh, with our economic situation anyway. Um, if, if you guys ever pulled out and didn't do it anymore. We would have to immediately seek to, to then. Give it back if, if mental health authority of the state and move out, and that's the only reason to do it, is we have no other.
Yeah, I think you just tell the state, hey, we don't want the local mental health authority, here you go, and then, then you'd be out.
And, and see, that's why I think some counties have done it in the past, is it just. It kind of is a relief to them. And, but, but that's. We wanna be your cha- our, that we're both thinking the same, to be your champion from a governmental.
We have worked as good community partners for years and years and years since, since it went from party behavioral health to symmetry care. And I think we have a mutual, um, a mutual desire to serve our community and our county. And to make sure that we're doing this the right way, and we don't have any intent, um, you know, throwing the county over the bus or. And we've always looked at this as a non-financial contract, like, we don't expect you guys to give us more funds. Because we have assumed all the responsibility for what the C F A A says.
Um, I, the, the word termination is used throughout this thing, but I don't see an actual, like, termination clause.
They'll terminate that one at the time, expiration of this agreement.
Termination or expiration of this agreement provided, that other provision of this agreement did not. Require the financial assistance to be used by counties prior to the termination. Or expiration of this.
You can terminate, you just have to get the money back.
That's under a word adjustment, it's not a termination clause per se.
At what point in the year do they give you your money, or is it reimbursement?
Monthly.
Monthly, in equal payments.
Some of them are reimbursements, that's what some of the. Most of them are just, uh, monthly allotments, um, and like says, like the.
County termination, county may terminate this agreement in its entirety or may terminate its obligation to include. A particular program area in the C M H P. So there is a termination clause.
There is.
You could close shop in ninety days, no problem, nobody be hurt.
Page sixty-seven.
Well, I think that's the other thing too, we don't, we don't want to close, we have.
Yeah, for people to serve.
Yeah, people serve and community members working for us and.
I mean, to some extent, it's a little bit sad, but. Your employee, Martha, is our Eastern Oregon Workforce Board representative for Harney County, and we appreciate her doing that. But most of the time, the members from the eight counties in our workforce board. Are private sector, I mean, they're, they're private sector employers, so are you. That's why we don't have private sector employers in this county. The way, I mean, we're, we have less, fewer and fewer, you know, as the years pass. And that's what that workforce board tends to talk about, is stuff that's, you know, private sector employment, not governmental. And, um, so you're one of the bigger employers in this county.
Yeah.
And.
So.
I'm just saying it's sad that our mental health, we have that much need for mental health services, it's not, it's not a good service, it's just.
Moving on, I'm okay with Commissioner Dorrell, as proposed to take it, solidate, uh, verbiage. Work with county council, um, at a very minimum, I maybe explore the option of a very limited contract. Uh, you know, ninety day contract or something until the C F A A is, is resolved or something, which keeps our relationship. During that time.
Yeah, you can do that, it can coincide with the C F A A if you want, I mean, I don't know how you put your language in there, but.
Yeah, we could say, like, it could, this contract can be in place until the C F A A is agreed upon.
Is finalized and signed.
Yeah, and then we can.
Yeah, I think you just gotta get some language in there, because it's all gonna hit joy.
So, but then we're gonna have to rewrite it once that happens and for the term and everything.
Yeah, and just be aware, this, this C F A they're proposing is potentially a six-year deal. We've never had more than a two-year with the county. Yeah, and so I don't think.
Makes you nervous.
Yeah, or, you know, I would say you can, county can keep its contract with the, with symmetry care at two years and. You can do longer, but I just, I just think you gotta be reasonable when you think that through, like, what's. Not gonna be disruptive to the operation and those types of things, um. So, anyway, but he did, this C F A has always been a two-year, but I see that it's.
So, and I think that's something that I know in our emails from A O C M H P, they have. Uh, brought up as a point for negotiation, like, let's take it back to a two-year contract, not a six-year one, so.
So I will say, just for the record, I know last week, last Thursday morning, A O C, um, some. A body of ten county, uh, selected individuals, both elected and. Uh, C M H P directors at the county level, not at the nonprofit or, or, uh, contract level. Met with the governor and the governor was, and her staff were very, very steadfast on not budging at all on what the C F A language. Is proposed language is.
Yeah, so we were at a meeting and John Schaefer left the meeting to attend. You know, came right back and reported that same thing that I said, so. Yep, I think there's a, yeah. I think they, that ongoing resolution has to be negotiated, and I think that's good. I just don't wanna disrupt services here, but, you know, while that process is in place, so that's mainly the goal, is I'm stepping aside here, is it. Doesn't gonna leave that within the, to try to fix, so.
So. Somehow or another, with county council, language that would continue the existing contract. Under, under existing provisions and existing whatever, however that would word or whatever. But, but then, once the C F A A is, is finalized. Um, a subsequent contract, permanent contract, whatever would be, uh, executed.
A two-year contract or, yeah.
Remaining of the two-year period.
Yep.
That will work.
Okay, okay, hold on. I'll look it over, if, if there's anything we have that hasn't been mentioned out loud here. That you think of or want, shoot it to me on an email.
And I, I believe Audrey has been.
The person.
Yeah, the, the attorney for contact, um, on this matter at county council.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
And just let us know, uh, we in touch.
Yeah.
When that.
Yeah, when you get some.
Look at it, it is, boss.
Yeah, thank you, Greg.
Yeah.
Um, I skipped over it, uh, public comment. Um, there wasn't really any public here other than the press and, um, and whatnot, and I don't see. Um, a couple people online, any public comment, comment from people online?
I guess we'll just acknowledge that we have some Zoom problems that we're gonna straighten out, and I guess I'll wait for the minutes on yesterday's.
Yeah, I don't know what problem you were having, because other people were able to get, were able to log in and attend virtually.
I discussed it with Holly, and I guess we had different, um, links.
Okay. Technology, we don't have to, I mean, it's, it's a convenience and, and whatnot, but we don't have to televise or, or put it out Zoom. So, I mean, if we have problems from time to time, it's, we wanna work for, work towards rectifying that, but.
Okay, so can I ask you for if there was anything that came out of that meeting, you know, just was kind of a recap of. So, I was, I was really looking forward to that meeting, actually.
Yeah, um, so. Because of previous public comments from a member of the public, um, identifying a, a shortcoming in our surveyor program. That we weren't really fully, uh, versed with at, at the county court. And understanding what the whole, the full, uh, responsibility of the county surveyor was. Uh, identified that, we had that first meeting, held that first meeting to, to discuss the role of a county surveyor and, and what we needed to do. So out of that, we're, we, um, we do have a county surveyor that was appointed in two thousand eleven. Uh, we've never, eh, the county has never executed a professional services contract. With that individual, because, um, in some places, some counties, county surveyors are elected and other places are contracted like ours. Uh, so there was never a contract executed with that individual as to what the compensation is gonna be. How much, how much are we gonna pay per month, a stipend or per hour or, or whatever? So the contract will basically have a, a statement of work in it that'll coincide with the statute, which I think it's chapter two zero nine. O R S two zero nine. Um, and, and other expectations, you know, for corner preservation work and, and et cetera. Uh, so that was the next, the next step forward for that. Um, and then we also identified in that meeting that the county surveyor records needed to be consolidated in one place and accessible. And we're working towards a solution on that, I have an idea and, and an area for those, those, uh, records. And, um. Anything else?
Sure.
Yeah, uh, we invited a broad range of people to it, from the state, tribal, um, federal. We didn't really have any federal representation there. But, um, anything that has to do with surveying and, and the, and the maintenance of monit- of, uh. Monuments, survey monuments, um, was discussed, and we were hoping that, you know, because we have. Eighty-five percent public lands, federal lands in our county, that, uh, those entities from those agencies would, would have attended. Cuz the B L M does do some of its own surveying work. And the coordination between them and us and making sure that our records coincide and others are the same is, is an important aspect. So, uh, we, you know, we didn't get any attendance from them, but we could follow up. Later on, and I know that our, our surveyor does coordinate and work with them. For research purposes, anyway, so. We're moving forward with it. More, more, uh.
More actively and we're more engaged.
Yeah.
But there's, yeah, yeah, we wanna.
I don't wanna make this so lengthy, so I'll, you know, you're a comment on.
We'll, we'll be doing a personal service contract with, you know, there had been the appointment years ago. And we're not looking to unappoint, but we are looking to. Um, better professionalize the agreement, professional services agreement and statement of word.
Rick, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I wanted to chime in during the, uh, long-range recovery group discussion, uh, but my phones have been very busy this morning, sorry. Uh, so just an update on the, uh, fee waivers for the building department. So far, we only have four permits that have been given out under the fee waiver. For a total of about seven hundred and fifty dollars and some change, so there hasn't been a lot of interest in. In that, or people aren't just pulling permits, I, I, I don't know exactly why. But just a kind of an update to go along with that discussion.
Thanks, sir.
Can, can we make sure that we have that information for the long-term recovery group posted on the website and social media if we don't already? I figured probably did, that's what.
All right, um, moving on, next topic is, is, uh, Wolf Resolution. And I'm gonna defer to Commissioner Frank on that.
Thanks, I just, I just sent out an email that I should have done beforehand. The resolution language is the same except for what we're asking for. And rather than just having the federal ask of delisting the gray wolf, it has some state asks as well. And so because of that and because of time management, I move that we table that to the next meeting.
Okay, there's nothing, um, time sensitive on, on doing this? At the federal level or anything, any action that they might take with?
Not that I know of, and there is a, a resolution to delist it that should be presented at the N A C O conference, but that's not until after our next. Regular court meetings, so I don't see that it's that time sensitive. And it might be worth perusing those other asks, because of some of the conversation we had today about wildlife services and O D F W are kind of addressed there, so.
So, motion to table?
Uh, I second the motion to table.
No, motion been made and seconded to table the Wolf Resolution until the next county court session, any further discussion?
Well, just thanks for the work on it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And opposed, hearing none. Uh, next topic on the agenda then is the telework policy. Um, I brought it up at the last county court session as just an initial, uh, introduction of the policy for, for county court's review of it. Um, I don't have anything to add, to add on that, um, other than what we've discussed the past time. It would be the intent then just to, just to adopt and, and, and add it to our, uh, po- uh, employee handbook. Um, any, any concerns on it or review?
Um, no, but should, should there ever be a need to tweak it, we always, what's our process for that after it's been approved and. Uh, adopted and in our employee handbook, how do we make?
I would say just a, just a, uh, agenda item to review, and it's just, it's just policy, so I would say as simple as. I, I wouldn't think there would need, need to be any lengthy process for it, we just bring it to county court session, uh, review it, propose, discuss.
Sounds good. Well, then I'm, I'm, what's the motion you want?
Uh, motion to approve or, um.
To adopt.
To adopt, uh, the telework policy.
I move to, uh, adopt the telework policy that's been presented and, uh. And have it be part of the employee handbook.
Second, a motion's been made and seconded to adopt the telework policy and add to the, uh, hem, uh, employee handbook. Um, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Um, new business, one item, and I threw this in here at the last minute just because it's kind of flared up in the last week. Uh, but there is a proposal at the federal level made by, uh, um. Can't remember if he's Senator or Congressman Lee out of Utah. Um, proposal to sell off. Millions of acres of public lands in Oregon, Idaho, Arizona, Nevada, Utah. Um, Alaska, um, I may not have all the states there listed, but it, it's a pretty big. Pretty big resolution, uh, or, or possibility. And they've, they've tried to include it in the, the beautiful, the big beautiful bill or whatever it's subtitled as. Um, and, and we all know how these kind of things can happen, you know, you'd, uh. Insert something into a bill that really has other purposes such as budget, and then they attach these other items to it and get it passed. Uh, I'm extremely concerned. Now, while I'm not in favor of government overreach, federal government overreach in any way, shape or form. I am a very big proponent of public lands and access by the public to those public lands. I'm very concerned that if, if, um, a vast portion of our public lands, right here in Harney County. I mean, you can look at it at two sides, if it was sold off, then we'd get, we'd get actual tax dollars, property tax dollars on that. But we're gonna lose access to it. You sell that off to a private entity and you'll end up with, with, um, Googles and, 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 um. Microsoft owners that, that fence it all off and restrict it to private access. Microsoft owners that, that fence it all off and restrict it to private access to, to hunting, private hunting reserves and, and whatnot, um, private recreational reserves that, that in order for the public to even get on it, we'd probably have to pay a fee. You know, so, um, I, I'm extremely opposed myself, my position, um, to the sales of public lands in a mass form this way. Now, having worked for the BLM and I know how, how certain pieces of public lands can be fragmented and even in Northern Nevada, there's areas that what they call checkerboard where one sector is, eh, uh, one section is, um, private and then the one next to it is public and then private, et cetera, and it goes in a checkerboard fashion. And that's a result of, um, westward expansion when the federal government gave the railroads, um, whatever numbered sections of, out of a township and range for them to use to either sell, to create revenue, to build the railroads or to use the resources off of them to build the railroads. And then over the years, the railroads didn't use them, so it reverted back to public or, uh, yeah, public government ownership. Those areas are extremely hard to manage for the BLM when you have checkerboarded sections of public and private land. I don't care about selling that off, I think it's even difficult for the BLM to manage habitat in those types of areas because you're managing in this, in this section, you're managing for a habitat, but the one right next to it, you're not because it's private. So I think there are areas through, through, um, definite review could be liquidated and, and put back onto the tax rolls and, and offered up for sales to neighboring landowners. I mean, well, anybody could bid on it, but potentially the best, best applicant would be the neighboring landowner for, for most cases. Um, so I'm not opposed to that approach, but I am opposed to this broad brush stroke of identifying, um, millions of acres of, of not just BLM but Forest Service as well in this bill or in this amendment. I wanted to bring it up, thought it was something in the, in a county where we are so, so, um, predominantly uh, public land holdings, that it was something that we should discuss, have on our radar.
I would like to have it discussed.
Um, I, I think, and, and I don't have anything prepared for action, eh, it's other, it's just, you know, we need to talk about it, but if we did a resolution, just like the Wolf, just like the Wolf topic. Um, it, yeah, something for the EnRAC to consider.
Or, yeah, or there, you know, good action to that.
But it, it's something that needed to be brought up, I didn't wanna just leave it laying on the table.
I don't like that I can't find the actual bill text online and most of the links are biased one way or another.
They are.
That's definitely something the EnRAC can look at, I don't know how time sensitive this is. EnRAC doesn't meet until for another two and a half weeks, two weeks, I guess. But they dang sure can take a look at that, I'd like some clarification on what exactly the bill language is.
Were you able to locate that?
Some town, um.
The billers?
Yeah, it's a link from the agenda. Says, and.
Are you talking about the wilderness study one, the Wilderness Society, is the new one?
Is that a part of the energy and nat- natural resource budget bill reconciliation?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
You find it?
The one that says energy and natural resources budget bill reconciliation, that one's only about oil and gas leases.
Wow, I'll click search it.
Yeah, I was curious why that one was included because it is, unless I missed something, it's all about oil and natural gas leases offshore and on land and their requirements to do more of those on public lands. But if they are really talking about selling off two hundred and fifty million acres, that's roughly half of the BLM Forest Service holdings and that's concerning. But the map on one of those websites referenced was misleading because the highlighted areas are not showing what they're proposing to sell off, they're showing all the BLM enforcement. So.
I, I, I agree, I, I agree, there's, it, it's a little hard to find, I did some searching and tried to find some exact bill language and maps to show what would be, what's affected and what's not affected.
Yeah, I looked for that as well, in my opinion, if, if we wanna have the EnRAC take a look at it and if we're not ready to, to take any direction as a court, but if individuals in their capacity as commissioners or judge wanna reach out to our, our federal representatives, at least asking for clarification or expressing concern with that, I don't think that would be appropriate at all. Because I, it is very concerning the potential of selling that off.
Well, we'll look at that one.
Yeah.
Uh, Utah is very aggressively uh, engaged in legislation or trying to enact legislation to turn over public lands within the state of Utah to the, to the state of Utah. Um, Nevada, I think, has had some movements along the way, the Sage Brush Rebellion and whatnot in Nevada and other, other movements over time. Um, which I couldn't say I'm, I was totally opposed to, but you know, there's other aspects like the wildfires, the forest fires that we've experienced last year. There is no way the state of Oregon could have afforded to, to fight those fires if those lands, if, if even they became private lands and then the state or somebody's got a responsibility to fight those fires, the state would have never been able to reform that. Um, you know, the, the, quite frankly, the beauty of public lands is that everybody in this whole country, whether they're in Maine or South Carolina, helps pay to manage our public lands.
For the state of Oregon anyway, though, if they maintain their same fee schedule for the Oregon Department of Forestry for their firefighting, they would probably have more than enough money because they, they're flush with cash, that's a whole.
Oh, my gosh.
I don't know if I have time to talk about that because we got the ODF survey, but.
Oh, and, and that, I wasn't trying to make a big deal out of that survey, I just felt like, okay, I'll look at it, six questions. It, it just like, it was meaningless. The only thing I'm aware that they do a, a lot of is, you know, the RFPAs and stuff, I'm sure they probably do some stuff, but I don't know what they are. And so anyway, I don't know if you guys are just better informed than me and you would feel comfortable with a survey like that, but I was like the, and they've never, eh, supposedly the annual that's due by June thirtieth, this is, I've been in office eight and a half years, this is the first time I've ever seen it. That's just, it was weird.
Well, I, I like. I, I agree in my initial email that I sent out to both of you is that I really don't have a frame of reference to evaluate them. The only, the only interaction I've had was during the most recent fires this last year.
Um, again, it, you know, eh, is their mission as it relates to Harney County or there are other aspects and, and if so, eh, are you doing them and why don't we, are, why are we not aware of them? Does it not need to intersect with us? That's fine if it doesn't, but I, I just felt like that's a pretty poor survey, they're assuming we know what they do and I don't think I do know what they do for us.
I mean, I, I think you're coming from pretty much the same position I am, I don't, Commissioner Frank, do you have any base of reference to?
It's supposed to be a collective answer, meaning the county court answered it once.
Yeah.
The majority of those questions I put can't respond and I can't remember the questions exactly, but based on the fact that there are parcels in Harney County that pay that fee to them, I don't feel like they receive a, a value for that fee they pay. And I was frustrated by their presentation at county college when they said we protect more acres than any other agency in terms of fire in the state, RFPA's protect about a million more acres on a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget and ODF's budget is a minimum twenty-seven million.
Were they counting RFPA's as part of their?
No, RFPA's aren't part of.
Okay, all right, just because I know that, you know, when, back years ago when I was involved with the Crane RFPA, when there weren't so many, when, um, ODF was the point of contact for us to get any of the old equipment and, and stuff like that, I mean, they supported us that way. They had, now they have, I think, a full employee that, that helps do stuff, but back then, they, oh, that was the agency where we tried to get a couple of grants and a couple of, you know, old beat up fire trucks or, you know, tanks and stuff, but I don't know what they do here.
No.
If you already answered it, then I guess you answered it.
Did you reply to it already?
I thought we were all supposed to do it.
No, it said, it said it wants a collective answer, so we'll consider that you answered it, but if I, if I'd have been doing, I would have put, don't know, don't, or you know.
Well, I think your perspective is, is well enough to represent the rest of us, so we'll.
Yeah, we'll take it off our plate.
I figured I err on the side of negativity and if that stimulates a dialogue with them and they wanna have a conversation about it, then we can have a conversation, they can educate us.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Okay, so as far as the, the, um, we're trying to do some more research and find the language of that, that's been added into that bill and, um.
And I made, I made three different notes to tr- remember to get in on the EnRAC agenda and so if you find some stuff, that would be a great thing for them to look at.
All right, and that's all my intent was today was just awareness, just to bring that, that topic to the forefront and, and awareness. Um, correspondence. We have a copy of the timber sale, just a timber sale notification, um, it's added to the, uh, to the Town Cloud package for the agenda today for the public to review. Really nothing more to it than that and then Sea Act report from um, our appointed member at large.
I think it's worth noting on the timber sale notice that two of those three timber sales, the two that have, are, are re- posts because they had no bids. And that is across the state of Oregon, they are having timber sales with no bids because there's not enough infrastructure, which has been a continuing conversation with the BIC and the EnRAC about what to do about that.
I mean, I feel like the Forest Service, if, if we need to have a, a, a federal agency that, that infrastructure for, um, timber, it's part of forest health is to harvest and, and lighten, you know, and not have to do prescribed burns all the time, which are, are not the perfect tool that they seem to think it is, that maybe that should come out of that budget and not, you know, eh, eh, private sector can't you know, doesn't have a guarantee of, of the work and then people cannot put all the money into it and have it fail, so put some responsibility onto the, um, the federal agency to start them up.
We had a conversation with the regional forester what day, Wednesday, earlier this week or maybe last week, she had concerns, expressed her by one county about the Blue Mountain Forest Plan Revision. And so we had this meeting and by and large, everyone said, we like this plan better than the one we have, we don't wanna see it postponed, we need to move forward. It calls for a lot more rigorous forest management, both in terms of, more so in terms of timber harvest than grazing. But one of the things that we had a conversation about and Senator Nash has brought up is when we say this is how much board feet of timber needs to be removed from the forest for it to be healthy, that needs to be a minimum expectation and if there's no bids, that's on you to get that timber out of there, not light it on fire, but get it out of there, so I think
Yeah.
there will be interesting conversations and like you said, it's a consistent scheme, nobody wants to, no one can start up a small mill if they don't know if there's gonna be logs available in four years.
You know, it. It sounds fun.
I, I have to take exception on, on forest health and, and uh, along those same lines, um, both, both the Senator, uh, Merkley and Senator Wyden, when they were here for their most recent, uh, town halls, both, uh, stressed the use of controlled burns, that's all they mentioned was controlled burns. Um, I, I have to strongly disagree with that in that, that that's not the only tool that should be looked at and used for the management of our, of our forests. Um, I have to also bring up the point that it was a controlled burn last year that got out of control um, and required firefighting resources to be put on it that could have been better used in an actual fire that was human caused. Um, so I, I eh, I disagree with the, that, they, they rely on the controlled burn tool too much.
Then they can say X number of acres were managed this year, were managed this year, yes. Some prescribed burns, I'm not against all of it, but it's, that's where they have their employees, that's where they have their organization, you know, has grown in those areas because that's what they default to. And of course, they have to advocate that it's a great thing, it's one tool. The other tools have been underutilized. And those are ones that actually use what the forest gives us.
Any other correspondence that you'd like to have added? Moving on then, uh, scheduling. County court sessions are on track for the first and third Wednesdays of the month. Um, we, next county court will be July second.
And that's an evening one.
And sixteenth.
July second will be, is, we'll, we'll do the bu- uh, bail pain at four thirty, but it'll be a five o'clock PM county court meeting.
And we did that to make room for.
The strategic planning.
Oh, yeah. I was sitting here trying to think, did we move that?
That was a test and you guys passed, good job.
Um, yeah, sounds good.
Make sure we have that reflected right on the website calendar.
It does, I think.
Thank you. I have to update in my calendar. Um, any other meetings of note? Between now and?
Oh, I, I had mentioned the Eastern Oregon Jobs Council, we are convening virtually, um, on the twenty-fourth and we will do the budget review, that's Harney County and seven other county commissioners, um, the Eastern Oregon Workforce Board Budget Review. Um, other than that, we've got our budget hearing on June twenty-fifth and is at at ten.
Yes.
And no, 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 C C P, um. I'm gonna be squeezing in a meeting with Feather um, Sam's Houston's of Biz, Oregon, when she's in town next week on the twenty-fifth, after she's got some other meetings just to uh, follow up with some stuff, she spoke with me on economic development. And I will share that with you once I have that conversation, that's all I have. On scheduling.
There is a Oregon Water Resource Commission meeting. I, I think it's today and tomorrow all day, but the portion where they're gonna talk about our rack five twelve process is Thursday, June nineteenth from four to five. And it's, it's up in Pendleton, but they have Zoom options available.
What's the agency called?
It's the Water Resource Commission, so it's, I guess all of those agencies have a commission made up of people from different areas in the state.
Okay.
And that's the one. You, you have to register way ahead of time to give any public comment, you don't even know what they're gonna talk about, I'll try to tune into it to see what they're.
Yeah, I would just tune in and listen at this point, but.
And then next week, every day, there is Living Water Resource Department Public Input Meetings all around the county.
I'm praying where other places too.
And I will attend as many of those as I can fit in. And the EnRAC meeting is Tuesday, the first, at six PM. Strategic Planning is the second. Yeah, I think that's it.
May, you may have seen, uh, uh, an email from Rick Stoffer asking for some bullet points or whatever on what they're gonna talk about, he likes to be prepared, he could have and he's tense the strategic planning, um, I don't know if you're, if our facilitators are gonna be putting anything out ahead of time or not, eh.
I can reach out to him again, I haven't seen anything in terms of an agenda, but I was hopefully clear to them that the group needs to kind of dictate the direction that it goes to meet their needs.
Okay.
Because I don't know if they sent out the examples, someone did, but so- some of the strategic plans for counties are very flowery, I mean, county wide. But if I, when I get more information, then we'll go on. Nick needs to show up and bring his brain and his good ideas.
Yeah.
I would um presume in past experiences in these kind of groups that it'll start off with setting ground rules and sidebars. And then move into brainstorming of from the department heads of of what they think is important and and where the county, what direction we should be going in.
In almost all strategic planning, they say, what is the vision? What is the mission statement and all that? And and so if we're gonna fence it around county government, you know, this is strategic planning for county government and how it can do. We're not doing the strategic plan for every aspect of Harney County and cities or anything, um, but I don't know how that would look, so. We, what I hope we don't do is get so bogged down on trying to agree on a vision or mission statement that we don't get anything done, because if it's framed within county government, county employees, departments, and how we can best serve our our county, um, then you know, that should be easy. I mean, the mission statement is just to serve with great customer service efficiency and performance or something, and then we can get to it.
And I think they're planning on a total of four sessions, and they're hoping to have enough information that they can put together our plan by December, I think is what they said. So I would guess this first meeting, they'll kind of outline some of the things we want to focus on, and if there's group people that really have good ideas and want to work on a vision.
If they're cool, I thought there were me too for some reason. Okay, good.
I was, well, I could foresee then potentially some subcommittees being created that that are given homework assignments to come back at the next meeting.
Yes.
Any any other meetings of note? Um, I don't have anything, and as already mentioned, basically, um uh the budget meeting, and I am um I am um pretty much ready for that. Have the resolutions ready. Um, budget, budget is done. I mean, there's not nothing else I can do with it. Uh, we've had to make some small changes because of things that happened from the time the budget committee approves it to the to the time we go to adopt it, um. So it's one thing that's kind of, and I'm thinking about next year, maybe pushing it back a little bit further. Um, we still have to have a have a budget meeting in order to uh approve those first five departments for the CAFRA grant. Um, by, they have to submit that application by the end of April. I think it is. So we we have to have at least one meeting prior to that and give the assessor time to to be able to complete that application. But I'm thinking about pushing the subsequent meetings a little bit further into into May. So that we, I mean, while it's great to have this time to to do a um a more detailed and continuing review of the budget to make sure we hit everything we needed to hit, and the numbers are right. At the same time, it does create a lag between the time that the budget committee approved the budget and the time we are adopting. Um, I'm not sure if that's, and so there's pros and cons to it. So, um, anyway, there have been some changes, some things, you know, and and even last year, the sub- previous years, during that last forty five days or so before adoption, other grant opportunities come up, things that we didn't have on our on our uh on our uh agenda or or whatever, um, at the time of the budget committee meetings. And you don't want to pass something up just because it wasn't wasn't uh looked at or addressed during the budget committee meeting. Anyway, just letting you know, we're we're on on track to finish that next week. Um, anything good of the order, general deliberation?
I can be quick for once. Um, I'm gonna be working on the symmetry care contract. I'm gonna get something back to you guys as soon as I can. I'll be working with Dominic and or Audrey and um but it will require us convening, you know, once I send it out, and you also, it looks good, convene to make it to formally um do it. So how do you wanna, as you're looking at your calendar or?
My June thirtieth is wide open.
Um, that is the final day. It has to be.
Yeah.
Very dramatic. Um, uh, mine is open that day. Um.
I am pretty open that day. I was just wondering because it is so dramatic, if it's inappropriate to give them a few days heads up and say, let's only gather, we can live with, not gonna be assigned till the thirtieth.
Yeah, I mean, I'll do it.
Yeah, well, we only have next week, other than if we don't go till the thirtieth, we have five days next week.
Well, would you want to, um, I mean, assuming I'll see how quick I can get, you know, an answer from uh county council. I just want to feel comfortable that they said this is reasonably valid legal legally, if they, you know, under the circumstances, um.
Well, on the, on the back end side, whatever we propose, they should have time to review too, so. So Monday, the twenty third is pretty short notice by the time you get it done, so.
Yeah, probably.
Um, the twenty fifth, we have a budget meeting, and we could you know, probably do a a special session on top of that. Um. We can go into special session and break away for the budget hearing and then come back, you know, something along those lines on the twenty fifth, since we're gonna be here anyway. Um, my twenty sixth is morning is is occupied, but my afternoon on the twenty sixth is open. And my twenty seventh is wide open.
You're at County College, right?
Yeah, you guys.
The twenty sixth, the whatever, I'll be at County College.
So then the twenty fifth is probably our best, if not, if not the thirtieth.
Okay. Well, stay tuned. Let me just see how quick it takes. My first couple of interactions with the county council office.
Tentatively, do we tentatively at nine thirty time?
Or the twenty fifth?
Yeah.
Prior to the budget?
Yeah, nine thirty.
So that'd be county court special session, get a purpose of, okay. Well, that's good.
Single topic.
Yeah, let's press forward. Let's see if we, oh. Okay, I'll change my plan into next Thursday. Get it in.
Commissioner Frank?
General deliberation. I'll try to be quick. At the Lepsy meeting, there was some conversation about insurance companies are starting to send in private contract firefighters when properties they insure are in fire danger, and they don't report to anyone. They don't check in with the E O C. And it's been happening more and more often, and so we talked about the potential for the county to develop an ordinance or a policy that defines our I C S and I don't speak this I C S language, but it basically would say when people come in, they need to report, this is our chain of command, and by doing that, that would give our county law enforcement some teeth if we we have people come in, because they're putting themselves in harm's way. They talked about another group uh called the Something or Other Angels, but there were instances, I won't say in southwestern Oregon, when they responded during a fire. Nobody knew they were there. They were fighting fire. They were evacuating people that weren't in the evacuation zone, and so maybe that's something that we would need a work session for, and maybe that's something our emergency manager will follow up on.
We just, we'll just, yeah, have to require them to post on Facebook everything they're doing, and then everyone will know.
Hmm, yeah.
Just kidding.
Uh, the other thing. I am unclear on how the county generates revenue from the solar energy sites that we have. I know it's about three hundred thousand dollars a year, but I don't think it's property taxes. It was described to some by someone that it was basically a Pilt payment, but some people that were involved when we did those original sightings said that they thought they remembered that that was that rate was open to negotiation into the future, and so I was wondering if we could maybe maybe have a refresher on that sometime in the future, because I know we have some other big sites potentially coming in, and so.
There's some interest out there and some other development.
If you can put that together somehow, because I don't have that information.
So Pilt is a negotiated amount. Um, uh, it gives the gives the developer a known amount of what they're gonna pay every year for X number of years. At the end of that term, um, it can be renegotiated, uh and and again, another Pilt type of a payment, or it can go to actual property value.
It seemed to me it was an eighteen year period for at least one of the.
Yeah, I don't I don't know what the current ones are, but, and I don't know if there's a, I I'd have to get into all this, but I haven't had to deal with it, so I haven't gotten into the specifics of of is there a standard timeframe that they are? Is it all negotiate negotiable? Um, I I don't, I don't know, but um I have asked the the planning director to conduct a review of fees for site site review and site application fees and all that to for comparison with other counties. Because I don't think that's been adjusted or or.
I believe ours are very low.
Yes.
And need to be raised.
Yeah, so. So I have asked the the uh planning director to conduct that review of our fees in that respect. And um yeah, so it's, so what we did with the last two developments, solar developments um would not dictate to a future one on what the rate would be.
Right. All right, so uh the other thing was I heard Judge Hart talk about the waterways in the city and how they reacted to flooding and how they're dilapidated compared to what they were in the past. And I had a conversation with some of the Burns government people, and they also have concerns about it, and their concern is everyone's realizing that's a problem. We're not gonna, we're not gonna do anything because nobody knows who's supposed to do it, and the same thing's gonna happen next year, and I didn't know if there is a a work session or a group working on that, or if we should have a work session with the tribe and the mun- municipalities to figure out a way to manage our waterways. I don't even know if you call them waterways, but the water management systems.
Drainage system.
Yeah. So I just wanted to.
So it's my understanding, and I have to I'll have to verify this, but it's my understanding. I believe the city has an easement for that drainage system that runs through the east side of town. Um, if they have an easement for maintenance, that would, that would be their responsibility, the way I would see it.
But maybe, maybe if we do convene a meeting because they're kind of not sure what to do, and it sounds like they're gonna be between city managers, maybe we could help urge them to, you guys have an easement, you know, let us know what we can do to give assistance to make sure that doesn't happen. As you talked about how that really exacerbated the floods. And the last thing, I had a resident of Portland reach out to me about a video they put together. She's worked with the Wetlands Collaborative, a video called The Harney Way, but I had to share this. Uh, she said, a friend and colleague of mine who lives in Blue River sent me an email thanking me for making and sharing The Harney Way. She described how watching the film and learning more about Harney County encouraged her to listen and talk with you during your recent visit to Blue River. Obviously, I've never been to Blue River, so she was talking about you. But she said she thought your presence and thoughtful questions improved the dialogue and focus of the gathering, so I thought that was pretty nice. Obviously, it wasn't me. Nice work.
No, I, that was after the floods, and they have an annual, as I mentioned, they have an annual tour of what they've done in the past year and what their recovery um efforts have been since the the holiday fires and um. And they had their local elected representative was there and whatnot. I I ended up missing the afternoon of it because it was the day that I needed to submit testimony on uh to the ways and means for our jail and for our flooding response. It was it uh related to the requests that we have in in for uh for the city of Burns and for the county in our flooding response. And um also for our jail capital project request. So I I sat around, I was like one of the last six people to testify, and I sat there for three hours, waiting to tell my name come up. So I missed the half, the half a day of it, but it was a very good tour, and that's where I saw the stuff about the land trust topics and whatnot. Um. And I and I just, I wanted to go to, you know, maybe if if there were state officials there that we were gonna, that we were going to be needing to interact with in our own recovery, to start establishing that rapport and whatnot, but it was good. They were all very very accommodating, had a lot of good information, uh shared a lot of good information, so.
I'd just like to mention some topics. I hope that in the in county court work coming up, we can address or talk about economic development contract, deflection program. And then this is just a reminder that since we did decide to go from cash basis to modified cash basis for our audit to make sure that our auditor was informed of that. Uh, probably Bobby Joe did it, but maybe. And then I have asked uh Brandon McMullen to please provide digital copy of the group photo of the elected officials. It's been a few months now.
Uh, I'm sorry, it, I got, things are swimming, eat, to discuss or address economic development contract, and what was the?
Deflection.
Deflection. Thank you. Okay. Um. Brief update on, and I mentioned at the beginning, I think when we were doing the A P, but I just, for the record here, um, the ARPA funds that we were given for awarded for the three million dollars for the courthouse annex work, renovation and whatnot, um, in twenty three, I believe it was. Um. We haven't, we've never used them. Um, I wasn't willing to just spend money on a building over there that we had no future in sight for, and just waste three million dollars, so we've never had a plan on what to do with them. They were supposed to be obligated by the end of twenty twenty four, by December of twenty twenty four, and we've been in con- uh conversations with Oregon uh Department of Justice, the courts on, because that's who it came through. It came, it was routed through O J D um on how we could use it and what we could do with it, and then obviously, in the in recent um in recent months, um, I have talked with the sheriff, and the the priority is a jail. The priority is not a justice center. So uh we've scaled back instead of thinking about doing uh a construction on the Lincoln property. And maybe someday being able to to convert the school into a justice center. Uh, the the plan right now is to rebuild right here on the existing footprint for the jail. It'll go, it'll extend out into the parking lot, but but basically what we uh where we're at right now. Um, so in order to use those funds for a new project, we had to had to get them to change the language uh through the legislative process uh to allow us to change it from the courthouse annex Lincoln Building to the courthouse annex sheriff's office, D A's office, jail facility.
How will the jail function during construction if it's going to be an existing footprint?
Um, probably they're gonna end up not holding, you know, people will just be released. We'll probably have a local booking site somewhere. People will be booked and released, which a lot of them are right now, could with the current state statutes on on types of cases, severity, and um uh, you know, the crime itself, just the totality of the crime on who gets held and not. Most, most cases are booked and released. Um, anybody that would have to be held would probably end up having a contract with Grant County and transporting them to Grant County and and held there in in the time where we weren't able to house anybody ourselves. Which was a proposal um for us to contract with count with Grant County for all jail services. Uh, with the exception of of, you know, midnight bookings and transportation to Grant County. I I don't like the idea myself. I don't. I think it uh it takes a service and a and a responsibility out of the county that that I think we really need to provide for here and not be contracting with an with another entity that's an hour plus away. Um.
My understanding is we we'd have to basically maintain the same services, because for the time that you have them in your custody before you transport them, you still have to have the dietary services, the mental health services, so we'd have to have all those same stuff.
Yeah. It's not gonna be much of a reduction or a savings in in jail operations, even if we did contract with Grand County. You're almost gonna have to have the exact same amount of staff. Um, you you can't call a corrections officer in at two o'clock in the morning just to do a booking. You're gonna have to have somebody that's on and covering twenty four seven each shift to be able to book, book and release or house. In some cases, you're gonna have to house somebody um overnight at least until you can transport it. So I just, I don't see the savings in 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 that suggestion.
It's a shame that we haven't scraped money together for that justice center, because the more I talk to people around eastern Oregon, southeastern Oregon, they they'd love if there were one here.
Yeah. Yeah.
It would, it would. Fill so many needs and why the state doesn't see that as a priority is frustrating to me.
Well, I'll go back to my frustration in. Um, the use of funds, and I think they were U S uh federal funds that came through Oregon Department of Transportation to build a bicycle. Walk over path over Highway ninety-seven. I believe south of Bend is where the location of it is or at the south end of Bend. Um, for twenty-seven million dollars. Twenty-seven million dollars would have, would have. You know, and it's a different pot of money. I get it, but it's just, it's just priorities and where the money's getting spent and, and. Twenty-seven million dollars would have built us a justice center that would have had economic impacts. Positive economic impacts to our county, uh, help, you know, consolidate criminal justice facilities and efforts and departments and. And court services and everything else.
Better services for our county and the whole region.
Yes. So eh, my frustration is, is the same.
So. Because workforce is on my mind a little bit, you know, Harney County, and I know Chris or Frank at the last meeting kind of. Expressing some interest of asking some questions, but. Harney County is. Uh, according to that asymmetry care meeting yesterday, uh, board of directors meeting um. Is supposedly, I don't know which database they were looking at, is one of the four poorest counties in the U S. Now, I, I, it, with, with what's gonna happen with the curtailment of irrigation water, et cetera. Um. You know, we need a break. We deserve a break. Uh, it's a, still a nice, wonderful place to live, but I just, I'm. It's hard not to be, it's hard to be optimistic at this moment uh, uh, with what's coming down because when. When your community has so few private employers, we have governmental, government and governmental pseudo-governmental. Employers are the biggest non-agricultural employer in our. In our county, schools. You know, government, uh, federal agencies, et cetera. And then there's the rest and the rest is. I mean, some of the. Small businesses that have succeeded, they ought to get an award for being an amazing business person to succeed in this environment. But if you don't have employers here. Then it's hard to develop your workforce anyway. And then when apparently our community is no different than, than many others. Many people that either don't want to work or can't pass the drug test. To fill some positions that need to be filled. So. Be thinking, cause I sure don't have the answers um and. You know. Someone will come up with something that would, that will help, or maybe there'll be some changes, you know, in, in what the state. Does for us or work, working with us.
Well, goes back to the timber sales. Timber sales weren't let or nobody bid on them because there's no workforce. There's no workforce and no facility and, and the cost of transport, cutting it here and transporting it hundreds of miles to a facility that could process the lumber. Is not cost effective.
Anyway, not to be down or just, that's the challenge of, again. The symmetry care employee who is our representative at, on the workforce board is outstanding person and, and. Very pleased for, with her service. However, what does it say that our main, we, we tried other, many other entities who just. Didn't do it for long or didn't do it at all and um. Probably because they didn't really fit in with the group of, I'm an employer, I know what I need in my workforce and, you know, I'm trying to help. Communities supply that workforce and, and do programs to help with that. We just didn't have anybody want to. In our community. We were, years ago, four or five years ago, we were definitely, when we were researching it, we were the only. Um. County in Oregon that had zero manufacturing. And then we sort of had some start, but it's not working out, you know, um. Manufacturing isn't everything. We understand why. Manufacturing doesn't work in a very remote place that isn't near an interstate and doesn't have. Both either the natural resource or the customer base here to, to do it. That's the big, the big challenge to do it. Back when we had the mill, there was timber here. Okay, and then they could ship it out. But um.
I don't know.
We get a lot of challenges.
I don't know. Uh, what degree? The county was involved. In decisions and allowing our rail to be taken out. Um. But it's definitely a detriment to us today for not having that, for those, for those topics right there in bringing, bringing materials in. For manufacturing and taking finished product out. Um. And, and it, it. You know, I'm a little. I'm a little uh, non. Agreeable. And they've been using that excuse for Harney County for decades on, on the cost of transportation in and out of Harney County for raw materials and finished products. Trucking goes through here every day. And I know that's got, those have got either front hauls or back hauls on them already, but. You know, transportation is just a fact of. Fact of uh, it's a, do a business.
I would disagree. It's, if, if we have neither the. The raw materials nor the workforce nor um, the customer base here. Then everything's gotta go out. And the cost of transportation is great. I mean, fuel prices and, and all the other things they make you, you know, take these mandatory stop rests and all these other regulations that have some, some good intent to them. But cut down on your ability to compete. When a manufacturing entity is looking to locate. Okay, maybe we have available cheap building or something, but then they look around and then they do the math, they do their own business assessment. They don't choose here. They don't choose here partly because of the workforce, but also. That extra transportation cost is, is what the difference is.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, trucks go through, it costs money, costs money though.
It's a cost of doing business.
And, and we can't, and, and we're not competitive because our costs are.
We have other things that help compete though, the, the, you know, the availability of, of cheap land. I mean, really compared to what they're gonna pay for an acre in Harney County versus the I five corridor.
Depends on what they're gonna do with it. I mean, if they need a workforce and they need to, transportation in and out, then that isn't enough.
I don't think we've marketed ourselves well.
That's probably true.
In many years past. Um, we tried to get, we've talked about and tried to get the cities to buy off on a, on a, uh, economic. And I, um. Oh, the tax deferral, the um. Dang it, yeah, the. Darn it. The um.
Are you talking about the enterprise?
Yes, yeah, the enterprise.
Yeah, why isn't that moving forward?
Um, I, I don't know, it's, it. We can't force it on the cities. For them to do it within their boundaries and the cities have been reluctant to, to uh. To sign off and do.
Because it defers. Tax revenue.
Yeah, tax revenue that we don't have right now. It's not deferring any existing tax revenue. It's deferring future tax revenue and only for a period of time. Um, and it's, and every other county surrounding us has, has a. Um, enterprise zone. And, and it's gonna be another element that we can't be competitive in.
Exactly, exactly, um. Yeah.
So. Um, soapbox, anyway. Anything else? Good? Not hearing anything, then the Harney County Court shall stand adjourned at twenty thirty-eight P M. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance.
I was so excited when I thought I put the bill in, right? And now I'm like, damn.
Sorry, we didn't get you out by noon. Um, yeah, I was just confused when I was reading through it, cause I thought. We don't have offshore drilling, we don't have oil. But then I thought it was gonna be related to the next thing.
Well, I kind of had, I didn't really want to read six to nine, just to be honest.